Good evening, everybody. Call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Here.
Walters.
Rarden.
Here.
Ewer.
Benner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Brian Sander from First Baptist Church.
That's right. Father, I thank you so much for just the business that happens in this room. Father, I thank you for these men and women who serve our city. God, I thank you for just the way you blessed our community. Father, I pray you continue to pour out your blessings. God, I pray that this, what happens in this room would be for the good of our city. Father, Lord, I pray you continue to have your hand of protection on Hayesville. God, we pray for just peace in our city, or we pray for just a community that, that thrives and pursues excellence in all things, Father. And Lord, we just pray that you would just continue to pour out your blessings, Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next we have a special order of business, proclamation of business appreciation month. So it's always great to be able to appreciate our businesses. Whereas June has been designated a Business Appreciation Month for the last two decades by the Kansas Department of Commerce to recognize businesses across the state for important contributions they make to our communities. And whereas Hayesville businesses provide essential employment opportunities to a diverse workforce, embrace invocation, innovative technologies, provide local tax revenues, and make other significant contributions to our community that promote opportunities for the economic well-being for our citizens. And whereas the City of Hayesville is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of the businesses and industries that reside in Hayesville. And whereas Business Appreciation Month offers the citizens of the City of Hayesville an opportunity to recognize Hayesville businesses for the essential role they play in increasing the quality of life of our citizens. Now, therefore, I, Russ Kessler, Mayor of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, on behalf of the council, staff, and residents hereby proclaim June as Business Appreciation Month, dated today, 10th of June. Like I said, it's always great to recognize businesses and just make this proclamation. All right, next we have presentation of approval of minutes, A, minutes of May 13th, 2024. Councilman Benner?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion on second to approve the minutes of May 13th, 2024. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next we have item one, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens that would like to be heard tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two, approval of license and bonds. We have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary notes, Series A, 2024, of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of annual tax if necessary for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. So we have a... Brett?
Welcome. Take a breath now, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Shogren, Stiefel Public Finance in Wichita, financial advisor of the city. This is regarding the Grandin Plaza addition, infrastructure improvements. At your last meeting, you authorized the sale resolution, which gives, which authorized us to move forward with the structure and marketing of general obligation temporary notes to provide interim finance for those projects. This morning at 10:00 a.m., we opened the bids and received three bids, which are outlined in your sheet I just handed out. The third best bid was from Northland Securities, which was kind of an outlier. Their true interest cost was about 5.31%. The cover bid was from Country Club Bank at 4.29798%, and Central State's Capital Markets was the best bid, which was pretty close to the cover bid, at 4.235227%. So we got three bids total, two of them were very competitive, and we're pretty happy with those results. The resolution for consideration tonight has been prepared by Gilmore and Bell, your bond counsel. It authorizes the issuance of the general obligation temporary notes and sets everything up for closing, which will occur, I think, June 27th, I believe. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. You may have, you've been through this process many times, so it shouldn't be, shouldn't be much of a surprise.
Council, have any questions for Brett? What would you like to do? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve this resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery in general obligation temporary notes, Series of 2024, the Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary for the purpose of paying the principal and interest of said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payments and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. And do I need to make another motion to take what bid we took, or?
We looked at this, and they're all linked together. So just one motion accepts the bid and adopts the resolution.
And then that would accept the bid from Central State's Capital Markets at a true interest cost of 4.235227%.
Second.
So we have a motion on second to, to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brett. All right, next we have item B, an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 8, Section 801 and 820, regarding stormwater management and design criteria. We have Tori from PEC, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, yes, as he said, my name is Tori. I am a design engineer and water quality specialist with PEC, and we worked with the Public Works Department to put this together. And so today I will be giving you a little brief introduction about adopting a stormwater manual. Okay, so before I get into the stormwater manual itself, it's really important to understand why a stormwater manual is necessary for the City of Hayesville, and that begins with the MS4 permit. And so the City of Hayesville has what's called an MS4 permit. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. This is required for communities whose stormwater discharges directly to a water, a body of water without treatment. And so this is monitored and enforced by the KDHE and EPA. And under this permit, it is a requirement that a stormwater manual is adopted that provides guidance for stormwater design for both residential and commercial developments. So now that you have a background on the MS4 permit and the stormwater manual being necessary for that, it's also important to know that a stormwater manual would combat both current flooding and then prevent future flooding events from occurring, and it would also establish a clear resource that provides guidance for stormwater-related projects. We recommend the adoption of the Sedgwick County Stormwater Manual specifically, and there are a few reasons. The major one is that the Sedgwick County Stormwater Manual is the most widely accepted and used stormwater manual in the Wichita area. Most of the surrounding communities have already adopted this manual, and developers are very familiar with the guidance. Something that I really want to stress about this manual is that the manual is here to provide guidance, it is not, it's not strict requirements. So this should not affect current developments or future developments at all. It is simply there to provide guidance to the design engineers, the contractors, the developers, and the community members, so. If you're interested in the specific ordinance amendments, and I know this was mentioned at the beginning, but this would affect Section 801 and Section 820, and after reviewing the subdivision and zoning regulations, we found that no changes would be needed to those. So I know that was kind of a lot of information and very broad, but are there any questions?
Councilman Crum?
And that's because we've said this is, is this a new requirement? Because obviously we've had our stormwater releases straight in forever.
Right, so it is not a new requirement, although we would have to look back when you were issued an MS4 permit. I believe it was 2013. I think you were issued your MS4 permit in 2013. And so essentially, you, every year, you have to do so many things to be in compliance with that permit. The KDHE changes and updates the permit every single year, and so this is one of the things that's currently a requirement of the permit.
Okay, and you say it's just more like a guidelines?
It is, it's just guidance, and honestly, I work on projects for the City of Hayesville right now, and we already use the Sedgwick County as guidance, so it wouldn't change much. But yeah, it is just guidance, there are not any strict requirements in it. There, there are some requirements in Appendix A, and that's why we're only adopting Appendix B and C, or Volume 2 and 3, so.
Any other questions? What would council like to do? Councilperson, pardon?
I make a motion we accept the, adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 8, Sections 801 and 820, regarding stormwater management and design criteria.
Second.
So a motion on second to adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, next we have item four, notices and communications, A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Lots of stuff going on at the library. The library is a really busy place in the summer, and that's really good because it gets the kids somewhere to go and kind of keep those lines sharp a little bit. Today, actually, it started, and then tomorrow at 10 o'clock from noon, they're also, they're having a polymer clay workshop that you can go and be a part of. Tomorrow on the 11th, will be Parents as Teachers Summer Storytime, those are Tuesdays at 10:30. Then at noon, at 2, excuse me, at 2 o'clock tomorrow is the Next Geniology Group Meeting. Also tomorrow at 3 o'clock, they'll have a matinee movie at the library, it's trolls band together. Then on the 12th, they've got one of their special events that they have, it's just called Laughing Matters. On the 13th and 14th, at 10 o'clock to noon, again, you've got another activity that's going on, and that's going to be Noon Perler Beads Workshop. On the 13th, from 3 to 6, you're going to have a origami activity. And the 17th, you've got another act, 17th, you've got a, at 10:00 a.m. to noon, you've got Pottery One Workshop, and then on the 18th, you're going to have a Pottery Two Workshop that you can get information on and go and do. And then on the next Tuesday at 10:30 on the 18th, you have the Parents as Teachers Summer Storytime again, and the matinee movie on the 18th is Crude's 2, A New Age. They've got the reading program, the summer reading program going on where kids can earn prizes for reading certain amounts, and just lots of activities going there, they need to go and check that out. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements? So we're at the Senior Center, some upcoming events. We have art with grandkids, that'll be June 12th and, and June 26th. Commodities Distribution will be Wednesday, the 12th. Mobile Market, Thursday, the 13th. Cow Paint Class, Saturday, June 15th. Are healthy bones important? That's a question. That's a presentation on Tuesday, June 18th. Senior Center Hustle will be closed on Juneteenth, which is June 19th. David's Job Memorial Dinner, that will be Friday, June 21st. Hustle Trip to the Mango Tree, Thursday, June 27th. And the Senior Center will, Center will be closed for Independence Day. Some reoccurring programs at the Senior Center, a support group, coffee and conversation, exercise classes, group, group games, bingo, craft classes, and as always, contact the Senior Center for more information. Yeah, Hayesville Hustle numbers for May of this year, the number of rides was 272. Last year, there were 254. So several more riders this, this month, this year. All right, next is item B, Sedgwick County Fire Department Station 34 Monthly Report, senior packet, as well as an email from Cox Communications. All right, next we have item five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business, we have A, presentation of the compensation and benefit study. So tonight we have Melena from a consultant with McGrath. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening to the mayor and to the council. My name is Melena Halverson-Maze. I am a senior consultant with McGrath Human Resources Group, and I want to thank you for the opportunity of being here in person. It is, when we, when we start these projects, most of the work that we do is done virtually, and so I've had the opportunity of meeting with your, your city administration, with your department directors, but there's always this element of what is it about the community that I don't know, because I'm not from Hayesville, I'm not from the Wichita area. And being able to come into your community and drive around, you get to learn a lot more about your organization, and so I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. A little bit about me, and then I do have a presentation that I want to walk through the project with you. It was a pretty expansive project, we're going to talk about compensation, and we're also going to talk about benefits. But I've been with McGrath for the past 10 years, and I have been working on compensation and benefits during that entire time, although I also am an individual that participates in public safety studies that, that we are involved in as well. And before that, I was an HR practitioner, both in the public and the private sector for about 20 years, 15 of which has been at the public level, and so I have a good familiarity with, with, with public sector. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and get started. All right, so if you can just indulge me for a couple of, a couple of minutes, there's been a pretty tremendous change in the market since 2020, and you know, there's a lot of employers that are, that are, they're trying to take a look at their wages, and it seems like they'll do something, and then within a year or 18 months, it's, you know, they start to be, they're starting to fall behind again, and they, they're wondering what in the world is going on. And so I want to take a step back and just, just kind of help isolate really what's been happening in the market since before 2020. And if, and you know, for those of us that have been involved in this, we could actually start to see what was happening well before COVID, but no one was really putting a name to it. Because when you are looking at the total demographic within public sector, we could tell that people were starting to leave, and, and you have heard the term of silver tsunami, and that is actually a very real phenomenon in the public sector, because you've got upwards of about a third of the workforce all across the United States in the public sector that has been age-eligible to retire. And when COVID hit then, that is when a lot of individuals just decided, I'm going to be done, I'm going to retire, I'm not going to continue, and then you had a lot of other individuals who said, maybe they weren't necessarily age-eligible to retire, but they said, I'm just going to do something a little bit different, and I'm going to leave the workplace, and you know, maybe I'm going to, you know, take a remote position. And that really started to change the, the face of recruitment for, for public sector. And so on the screen in front of you, you'll see that we've got a staircase, because it seems that we've had a number of things over the last couple of years that have kept compounding wages. We have had the silver tsunami that I'm talking about, we've got the pandemic, which really changed how employers needed to react to their employee needs, and how, you know, that compensation started, really started to become an issue, because then you started to have an infiltration of dollars into the economy, and that changed the, the private sector. Well, the private sector is, whether you agree with it or not, they are a direct comparable to, to the public sector. There's a lot of positions that have transferable skills, and so as those dollars were pushed into, into the economy, then we started to see private sector wages really, really increasing. And if you think about it, a couple of years ago, within the last four years, we were talking about $15 minimum wage. We don't talk about $15 minimum wage anymore, because all of the wages across the United States absolutely just surpassed that, and, and we, we keep going. So when that happened then, in the, in the public sector, organizations were losing their human capital, and we call it poaching. You literally were losing people who are qualified, because somebody else wants that skill set as well, and if you're going to pick two people, you're going to want to pick the person who's experienced, because you don't need as much training. And so that was creating a little bit more of a problem for public sector, and now on top of that, we have the new reality, and that is called inflation, and that is a real issue. Now certainly we can have negative inflation in the future, but right now, you know, the inflation that Oregon, that, that the United States, that your employees have been experiencing for well over the past year, that is starting to move the needle on wages. And the dollar, what I, how I try to explain this is that it's not as flexible as it used to be, and employees now are suddenly being challenged with, I may not want to leave the organization that I'm working for, but I may not be able to afford to stay, because I have to make sure that I'm covering all of my expenses and everything that I am, that I am responsible for. So that puts all employers really in this very difficult position of, it seems like everything we do, we just can't seem to get caught up, and that's because there's just a lot of building blocks that, that is, is, is starting to, you know, really focus on, on increasing your wages. And so what do we do? Organizations are doing comp studies, and that is what the city asked for our organization to do for you. I do have a, I have left this PowerPoint presentation for you, I'm not going to talk about this one in much detail, but there's a lot of other reasons why organizations are losing their human capital, and, and not to say that this is specific to, to Hayesville, just more on a, on a general level, that public sector in general really is a struggling industry in terms of recruitment and retention. And part of that is because a lot of the new workforce just does not even realize that public sector is an industry as a career, and they, it's normally something that is absolutely passed by. So let's talk about your demographics, and then we're going to talk about what we found in, in terms of the market, because this helps frame what it is that Hayesville should be expecting over the course of the next decade. We took a look at your demographics, so the charts that you see on the screen here have all of your employees in it, and I have age-banded all of them, and then I sat back and I did a little bit of, of analysis. And overall, very positive on the screen, your average tenure in the organization is just over seven years. Nationally, it is at seven years, and we've been watching this number decline. The federal government updates this number every other year, the new next number is coming out in September, I'm really interested to see what, what is going to be happening, but we can see that there's an absolute decline in the tenure in public sector. So you think about the 30-year employee who comes in, and then they spend their career here with Hayesville, that's no longer happening with the new workforce coming in, and you can tell by, when, when you're looking at your turnover data. So when we graphed all of your employees by age, what we found is that about 28% of your workforce, they're going to be age-eligible to retire sometime over the course of the next decade. And what that means for you as an organization is that you're not going to stop that from happening, they're going to hit their qualifier, they want to go start what's, you know, the next phase of their life, and you're going to let them, and you're going to let them go, but then you have to backfill those positions. So you know that if nothing else were to happen, you're going to lose, you're going to lose about 30% of your workforce just from that, and you're going to have to backfill those positions. So for that, then, you're really going to have to be concerned about recruitment, and we have to make sure that you have solid market-competitive wages at the front end to be able to draw in your new human capital. But in addition to that, if you take a look on the screen here, and I have this, you have a really snazzy little device here, if you take a look at the, the numbers here with people who are aged 30 to 39, 20 to 29, this is their average tenure in the organization, 1.82 years and 5.52 years. What you are finding is that the individuals who are under the age of 40, they're not staying, and right now you can see that, you know, that makes up a huge number in your workforce, but they are leaving, and what you need to be worried about as an organization is retention, because as every employee leaves, you might have them for a few years, you've trained them, you've put a lot of financial resources, you've put a lot of human, human power into training, and then when they leave, then that money goes out the door. And so turnover can be very, very expensive to an organization, and that is part of the reason why, you know, you are in an unenviable position, in that you need to be concerned about your recruitment, and you need to be concerned about your retention going forward. And one of the best ways of helping keep your human capital is by having market-competitive wages. So let's talk about your project, and we're going to, we're going to breeze through this real quickly, so that you have an opportunity to ask questions. When we, when we work on projects, we like to understand what every department is responsible for, what their positions are responsible for. So when we started working with the city, we met with your administration, we met with your directors, and from there, then, we asked for employees to fill out what's called a position questionnaire, that gave us more information about what their responsibilities are, so that we could analyze them a little bit further. And during those conversations, we identified comparable organizations that make up the market, so when we talk about how are you doing against the market, it was during those conversations that we identified who your market is that you are competing against, and I'm going to show you that here in just a moment. We collected that market data, sometimes it takes us a little bit longer to do, because we have organizations that are all under stress, much like you, and sometimes it takes us a little bit longer to get that market data, and that's why we might have been a little bit long with this project. But we analyzed that, we're going to look at those findings, and then from that, then we develop what our recommendations are. And I met with your administration team, your administration team then went with your directors to give feedback, and then once we were done, then I met with the directors and answered any last-minute questions, we talked about a couple title changes, and we got this wrapped up for you. This is a list of the public comparable organizations that we use to compare your salaries when we talk about the comparable market, and when you look at them, you will see that they are going to be comparable communities in size and also in geography. And public organ, you know, this is a really important part of our process, because, you know, you're a very small community within a very large area, and the selection of the comparables is very important. I will say that in the future, if Hayesville feels that they are not, you know, once again, that those ranges aren't holding to the market, you know, there's, there's something that we can do about that, and still be able to hold on to those public comparables that we utilize, we'll talk about that here in a little bit. So overall, when we do these studies, we like to get an understanding of how your salary ranges are against that comparable market, so we collect multiple data points for every one of your positions, and we, we analyze that, we put that into what's called a comp ratio. It's a comparison ratio between Hayesville and the rest of that comparable market that we analyzed. And when we look at the next couple of slides, I've color-coded it, and we want your number to be 50. 50 means that your wages are aligned to the external markets wages, and we will color-code that, the further away you get from the market, the worse, the worse it is. So a blue column is good, a pink column is okay, and a red column is not okay, and I apologize that I use red, I was actually, I went to training, consultants go to training as well, and we were told we should never use red anymore in case someone is, is colorblind, but I did not have time to change our wages. So, so this is where you are looking against your Step 1, and what we found is that 56% of the Step 1s here at the, at the city are too far under the market, you've got about a third that are doing okay, and about 12% that we would consider at risk. That means that their industry may or may not be competitive at the 45th, at a 45% comp ratio, it means that we look at that a little bit closer, it really is going to be very dependent upon, upon the industry. So overall, that means that well over half of your positions at Step 1 are not market-competitive. Then we take a look at Step 8, which is your midpoint, and what we found is that the city was losing, was losing some ground against And what we found is that the city was losing, was losing some ground against the market. So by the time you were at your midpoint of your salary range, the majority of your positions were no longer market-competitive. And that then tells me then that, all right, we're going to have to make some some range adjustments. This is not just that your minimums are too far. It's that your total ranges needed to be readjusted. And then the last one that I'm going to show here is where your actual employees are. You know, you do have some pretty good tenure in the organization. On average, like I said, about seven years. But when we compared what your incumbents are earning against the other incumbents holding those same positions in those other communities, we found that the majority of your of your staff are are being compensated less than those other organizations. And part of that might have to do with the the amount of time that you are allowing your employees to progress through. And that will be one of the, one of our recommendations here for you this evening. So overall, what we found is that in the market, that we're going to have to make some changes for you. And then we took a look at your current salary schedule. And we identified really just, you know, one item that that I would say we wanted to, we wanted to take care of, and we did. You have 56 salary ranges for 70 classifications, which means that your your salary ranges are very position-specific. And what we tend to, what we, what we tend to recommend is is banned them together into pay grades because many of them have very, very similar market sets. And then we will also do an analysis to make sure that they are aligning correctly within the salary schedule. And before we created your salary schedule, then this is a, this is a policy decision for the organization. One of the items that we talk through is, all right, well, now that we know how you are, how your compensation looks against the comparable market, now we ask, what do we do with that data? Because we have an array of data, and there are organizations really have three opportunities to select from. You could say, or you could just ask the question, all right, of of all of that data, where do you want to be in the market? And your options are, I'm going to be a leader in the market, which means that I'm going to pay higher or I'm going to pay more than the organizations that we are competing against. Okay? So that is going to be organizations that will say, we want to be at the 75th percentile. We want to be at the 80th percentile. And that means that you're going to pay more than the majority of the comparables on that list. You also then can be the organization that is going to pay less than, less than the average market. And that sometimes has to happen. We have a client, and I use them as an example every time I have have these conversations. It's Flint, Michigan. Flint, Michigan is the water crisis city in Michigan. And that is the reason why they cannot afford to have market-competitive wages because they have other financial considerations. And so they have accepted a comp philosophy to say, we're just not even going to hit market. And we know that, they know that. That comes with its own set of challenges because you're going to have additional turnover and you're going to have additional training costs. So I, I'm a believer that if you don't have market-competitive wages, you will still expend the dollars. You're going to expend them in other line items, though, like overtime and training. And then most organizations, they come in right around the middle. And they say, all right, well, we need to be good consumers of the tax dollars that we have. We want to pay market. We want to be fair to our employees, but we can't afford to go above and beyond. And so we end up right, right in the middle at the average. And that is where I've set Hayesville. And so in the future, one of the topics of conversation, if down the road, this market does not change and it just keeps going, you know, one of the things that we can talk about is, do we need to put you a little bit higher than the average where we're adjusting you up a little bit more that allows you to continue to use the comparables that you're using? It's just that we poise you maybe a little bit more competitively. I don't think you need to do that at this point. I think you need to, you need to spend some time on the current model that you have and see how it is working for you. So what you see here in front of you is the structure. This is in the the body of the report. It's one of the appendices at the very end. And it continues to be a step model. So it looks very similar to what the employees have right now. There are 19 pay grades, and each of those steps are 3% in nature. So let's talk a little bit more about the details of that. I've set your compensation philosophy at this point at average. That it can be certainly discussed in the future to change. And then what we did was, we created less pay grades for you. If you recall, you had 56. We've got you down now to 19 pay grades. That means that we've got multiple positions in the same pay grade with a, the same type of separation between each grade. And this is important for compression. It's important if you have career leveling because there, there is a set percentage that of difference that the employee will experience if they promote into a higher position as well. And that was, you know, really important for the structure that that we wanted to create for you. We do recommend that the employee progression is going to be done on an annual basis instead of every other year. I do recommend that you make sure that you are tying that to performance. However, it should not be a guarantee. And then there are going to be some modest title adjustments, and that is going to be on the calendar or on the on the legislative docket after this. When we, when we do these studies, the most common question that we seek, not necessarily from the elected officials, but from employees, is how did you decide that my position was going to get placed where it is? And there's a lot of different reasons for that, of which is on this chart. We use four primary, four primary pieces of data. Number one is the market, very clearly the market. Number two is the position analysis from the position questionnaires that your employees completed. Number three is internal equity. So you might have two positions that are very similar, but they're marketed a little bit differently. And we determine that they have to be aligned together. And then number four is compression. And that is a real issue because you have rank structures here at the city. And individuals are less inclined to want to promote up if, you know, perhaps ranks that are under them are going to pay as much as what they are earning with overtime. And so we do need to be thoughtful of that and having proper separation so that people have meaningful adjustments and decide that they want to promote into higher-level positions. So that's the salary schedule. The other parts of this process, then, involve what you need to do to maintain the structure going forward. There's been a lot of time and a huge commitment by your, your directors and your administration to help us work through all of those position placements. And now that you've got a model, how do you manage it going forward? And we have some recommendations in in the report. And the first one is to make sure that those salary ranges are adjusted on an annual basis, if at all possible, with an economic indicator. You want those ranges to stay aligned with the market. We've got you in the middle now. And if the rest of your neighbors start going up and Hayesville is not, then you're going to start losing some of your competitive ground that we just gained for you. We also want for your employees to have those step increases on an annual basis. Certainly, you know, we, we want to make sure that that is based on performance. And I also included at the very, very end of this process, an opportunity for a double step. If you have, you know, you have a gold star situation going on for an employee and you want to reward them above and beyond, you know, you certainly can utilize your salary range in that manner. And then we do recommend that you do market updates every three years. It does not have to be as comprehensive as this one was. Usually, market updates are very quick. We go out to the same comparables. We take a look at what their, what their wages are. And we give you a standard percentage of, this is how much you have to put onto your model to help catch yourself back up, to get you back where you were. Usually, what we all recommend is that you use your metrics. Take a look at your turnover. Take a look at how long it takes to hire positions. Because that is a, that is an objective number that helps you identify, are you having a problem with your wages or not? I understand, and I'm the first one to admit, wages is not everything. There's benefits, there's work culture, there's a lot of other reasons why an employee is here. But that is something that's measurable, that you can rely on to determine, do you need to take a look at your ranges sooner? I also have given you a couple of other compensation opportunities. And these are in the body of the report. And I'll just very, very quickly talk them, talk them through. If you have questions on that, we can come back to that. But bilingual pay is one of them. And that is something that a lot of, a lot of communities are are implementing because they want to make sure that they are providing the top-level service that they can. And we recommend that you look at it from a citywide basis. All of the positions that might benefit from having bilingual opportunities then should be part of a policy and how you determine those positions and what qualifies a person to receive bilingual pay. There's more information in the body of the report on that. The city has shift differentials. If you choose to, you are a little bit short of what we find in the market typically. You can make an adjustment for that. And then also on-call pay, weekend differentials and holidays are probably two areas that you could look to boost that as well. And the last one I'll talk about, we've already talked about performance pay with double step, is the longevity. I do not recommend that you get rid of that. Please retain your longevity. Don't get rid of it. All right, the last thing I want to talk about is your benefits. And before I talk about that, let me just kind of steer where I think that the organization's going to want to look. And when we look at, you know, a couple of years ago, we were always looking at wages and benefits. But there's something that's above and beyond, and it's called total rewards. It's the total experience of the employee when they are with an employer. And so we look beyond just the wages and the benefits. We look at what you're doing to help develop your employee. We're looking at how you are helping to take care of your employee and how are you recognizing them? And that gives them the totality of the experience. The more that you can, the more that you have involvement in those five areas, the more engaged your employees tend to be. And this is really a, it's a roadmap for the organization. Not everything has to be tied to big wages. You could do small things for the employees in each of those areas to be very meaningful for your employee. So there's a roadmap in the, in the report for you. But with that said, I did take a look at more of your traditional benefits on a high-level overview. And there are some opportunities in the back of the report on your health insurance. It shows you how you are rating at this point with all of your, all of the different options that you have. I will say that there is an opportunity there. I do recommend that you talk to your benefits broker about that. However, I am not a health insurance advisor. But there, I, I think that you have some opportunity with an HSA or an HRA contribution to the high-deductible health plan. Your time-off benefits are looking really good. Your PTO, it's probably one of the smartest moves that you could have made. Your, your holiday is is doing really well as well. There might be an opportunity for paid leave, paid parental leave, or elder care leave if you decide that you'd like to do that. It is an up-and-coming benefit that is being offered. Even if the states don't require it, in some, in some states, it is required. But in others, it is not, but it is picking up some momentum. You do have an opportunity for some payout provisions on a tax-free or a tax-deferred basis. There are some IRS opportunities there for you that you could explore on payouts. And then I also gave you just a couple of others that I put into more of that total rewards look. And that for, you know, the organization can explore that. None of which, none of this is anything that's immediate. All of your benefits are going to take you a little bit of time to assess, really, is that important to your organization? Is it important to your employees? And what is that return on investment going to look like for you? So with that, sorry if I talked a little bit fast, why, but I had a lot of slides. I will entertain any questions.
Any other questions? Councilman Crum?
At the beginning, you were talking about how the private sector is poaching from the public sector. But all the comparisons and stuff you did was all with public sector, right?
It was all public sector. But we also do try to pay attention to what we understand in the market. There are some, there are some positions, you know, it might be CDL drivers, you know, of that nature, administrative finance. A lot of your administrative is going to have transferable skills. But it was not something that, it wasn't, it wasn't anything that we calculated into our, our formulas. No.
Okay, so it's just public against public?
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Anybody like to make a motion to receive and file this compensation benefit study?
I made a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the compensation and benefit study. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rard? Yes. Bennett?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have item B, consideration of position title changes. Will?
This is what was mentioned in the previous presentation. There are several positions that we have recommended job title changes. And there's a memo from Angie in the packet. If you do have any questions, we can answer those. The main point of this, from my perspective, is when somebody's on a job search website and they're looking down at, say, IT director. And IT director can mean several different things. And so when we had the position questionnaires filled out and they were looked at, these title changes said, what this person's actually doing fits more with, say, a systems administrator. So now, if we change it, somebody's going to look at jobs and they're looking at system administrators. They see, okay, yeah, Hayesville pays the same as everybody else, so I'll apply for Hayesville as well. Whereas previously, if the job title was something different, it may be compared with jobs that are different, at higher rates, if that makes sense.
Anybody have any questions for Will? Councilman Crum?
I don't have any questions. I came in and talked to Will earlier about some of this stuff. And so I'll make a motion that we approve the position title changes as presented.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the position title changes as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rard?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Lynn, I appreciate you coming to Hayesville.
Thank you very much for having me.
All right, next we have a consideration of lease purchase of public works truck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a lease purchase of a new vehicle through Enterprise Fleet Management. The new Chevy Colorado replaced our 2016 Chevy Traverse, which has approximately 57,000 miles. The Traverse will be sold by Enterprise Fleet Management and expected to be sold for approximately $10,000. The lease purchase will be a three-year term totaling $38,061.72 with the monthly rental fee of $1,057.27, including the full maintenance program. I'm requesting approval to proceed with the lease purchase of the 2024 Chevy Colorado from Enterprise Fleet Management on a three-year term totaling $38,061.72. And this is a budgeted item and will be paid out of water, wastewater, street, and equipment reserve funds. I stand for any questions you may have.
Councilman Crum?
Have we started leasing more, more vehicles or?
We have two vehicles, and the public works, this will be our third. And I think PD has two patrol.
We're signing up for a maintenance program. My question is, how fast can they turn that stuff around?
So we actually do that at Doug's. Doug's is a, a partner with them. There's probably hundreds in the Wichita area. But one of these are new vehicles. They're not going to need too much maintenance. But when they do, first chance, we'll take them as Doug's.
Okay, so if something happens, in other words, we're not going to have to send it to Enterprise somewhere and they're going to correct it?
Correct.
And we, like, we'd be out of the vehicle for two months?
Like, for instance, we call Doug's on an issue we have, and he's backed up for a week or two. We have plenty we can call in Wichita and say, hey, can you get us in quicker and take it that route?
Any other questions for Tony? What council like to do? Do we like to approve the lease purchase of the public works truck? Councilperson, Barton?
I make a motion, we approve the lease purchase with three-year term totaling $38,061.72 for the 2024 Chevy Colorado from Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the lease purchase of the public works truck as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rard?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item B, discussion of playground rules.
Evening, Mayor and Council. At the last council meeting, you requested staff and park board to review rules for playgrounds. We reviewed several other cities, discussed these with park board, and you have our suggestions in the packet. This is open for discussion.
Councilman Crum?
George, when I'm looking at, it looks like some of them might be considered rules for the park and other things look like they're just for the playground area. And I'm just wondering if we need to make sure we identify those, if that was the intent. Like, the be respectful of others, do not damage or destroy park property, no physical violence, no teasing, name-calling, or vulgar language seems like something we could put park-wide, not just the equipment. And then you mentioned no bicycle roller skates or skateboards permitted on the equipment, no pets allowed in playground area, no gummas allowed in the playground area. And then we've also got no glass allowed. Is that supposed to be the playground area or the park?
So the intent was a playground area and that one, that do not damage or destroy, I could remove park, I could change that to playground equipment.
Well, no, I think that should be park. Some of, I, I think it's good to have some of these not just be regulated to the playground area. area.
Okay. So the intent with these was just to put them on playground, for playground rules, so...
Chief, let me ask you, if you've got something put up at the entry of the park, which happens to be by the playground equipment, and it just says, no physical violence, no pushing, shoving, or hitting, and it doesn't say in the playground area, would it not be assumed that was park-wide?
It could be assumed that's park-wide.
So that's why I'm wondering if maybe some of these things, we kinda want park-wide and some of them just be specific to the playground area.
But then you get two different signs. They're not gonna read one sign, much less two signs.
Yeah, so the intent was...
Well, that's why I say you put them on the same side. You just put it in the entryway of the park that's right by the playground area anyway.
Didn't that one, that one only.
So the intent was to put the sign at the playground area right there for playground rules, with the title of this being playground rules, not park.
Okay, so if we're gonna do that, should all of these say in the, or should we leave? I guess the only one that I felt like wasn't specified about what it was, no glass allowed.
Or put park and playground rules. That covers it all.
Yeah. Could you say the no class, the no glass was intended for just the playground area?
Yes, because of bottles, glass, kids take off their shoes in the mulch area, and we don't want glass in there. Or glass being broken on a slide or something like that.
Yep.
The equipment and everything is to keep roller blades, skates from going down the slides, issues that we've had.
I mean, lake area, lakes, you can't take glass in. May wish we let it in parks.
Open discussion, whatever you guys wanna do.
I motion we change it to park and playground rules. And it covers it. But you can put it by the equipment.
We used to have a sign that just had the hours and did it have guidelines on it? This was a long time ago.
I was thinking, one time, you're right, because I thought the same thing and I had to go look. The ones that I could find only had hour line around September.
Because I wanna say, even when the tennis courts were over by the old pool, that's now the new pool, there used to be old tennis courts over there. I'm thinking we even had rules over there. But again, that was a long time ago.
So, for instance, I mean, we have rules on the pickleball courts, I believe. We have rules going into the dog park that are for those. I know the dog park rules are in chapter 12, right? Yeah, so...
I know there's hours at the, at the lakes for, for fishing.
I mean, the pool has its own set of rules. Plagueons Carpenter, I believe, has some rules on it. So I guess it's, I mean, intent was for the playgrounds, but...
So is there anything there that would not be expected or appropriate for the park at large? Not really.
Well, you have to, you have to let them have parks and skateboards in the park.
And pets, if you're walking your pets to the park, but you're not in the playground?
Right.
Is that what, kinda what you're thinking about?
Pets would be the one, yeah.
Well, but you could leave that part in there. No pets allowed in the playground area. No bicycle, roller skates permitted on playground equipment.
Unless it's a skateboard.
Playground equipment, not playground in there.
Councilor Rorden, did you have a question?
Yes. So, I understand this is long overdue and this, this is what we brought, we talked about. But I guess kinda one of the questions, I, we can put this on a sign and hang it up there by the deal, but if the kids don't wanna follow it, big deal. So where does that fall? Does this give the police department authority to go in and, because I know now it's very limited in what you can do. So does this give, kinda give us some teeth to, so to speak, to the police department to go in and handle the issues that are there every day? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking.
Chief, didn't you say last meeting, though, that maybe it wouldn't even be the police? It could get city employees, kind of?
Correct.
Right.
That's the intent, would be to have any city employee that was over there, city official there, have that right to send somebody home from the park. Tell them, you need to leave the park. Now, where it goes beyond that, we're still working on that part of it to kinda figure out what our procedure is beyond that and what legally we can do to either keep that person from the park or have some repercussion against the juvenile or the adult in some cases in these situations. So that's, that's part of it that we're still working out, what we can do from that point on. But the, the intent of the rules would be for anybody that's there, any city official that's there, whether it be a public works employee, a hack employee, or a police department, that they can ask somebody to leave the park and they have the legal authority to do that. And then when the person doesn't leave the park, then it becomes a matter of, they were given a lawful order to leave the park by a city official, and now they did not, so then it becomes something that can be enforced otherwise.
Okay. Well, I would just, you know, I mean, I didn't, I said the police, but I mean, you know, like you said, it's any employee, but, you know, if we're just gonna stick a sign up there at the park and nobody does anything, big deal.
My whole idea in requesting the sign was just for that, to get so that they have leverage to say, hey, look, it says right here.
Right. Oh, I, yeah, I agree with you. I'm, I'm 100%, you know, but, I mean, you know as well as I do, the kids nowadays, you put a sign up there, you know, oh, looky there, you know? Half of them can't even read it.
Adults aren't gonna read it.
Yeah, you're right, they ain't gonna read it, so...
And we did have a situation just a couple of weeks ago where we had a public works employee that was over there cleaning something, and there was a kid with his bicycle up on the playground equipment. And somebody mentioned it to that public works employee. He walked over and told the kid, hey, you can't have that up there, get it down. The kid got down, and we came later, but we didn't have to be called for that because the park worker took care of it. He walked over and said, hey, come down from up there. No signs or anything else, but the kid respected him, which is good, and got down off the equipment with his bike and didn't tear anything up.
Well, that's good. I mean, like you said, you, whether it's you guys or whether it's a, a city staff, you know, somebody, you know, public works or whoever, like, or somebody from the rec department or whatever, you know, goes in and says, hey, says right there, you're not supposed to be doing that, so leave. You know, and then if they don't leave, then that escalates to something else. But, I mean, that's, that was my point was, is to make sure that this sign that we put up is going to give somebody a little bit of teeth, so to speak, to make these people that aren't abiding by the rules to do what they're supposed to. So that was my question. So, yeah, I'd answer that.
So, uh, so how's the verbiage on this? Was, uh, did you wanna add something to it or remove? Councilperson pardon?
I make a motion, we change it to play, park and playground rules. And on, what's the one was it? The no bicycles, roller skates, or skateboards permitted on park equipment. And then let it roll.
Should that be playground equipment?
Playground equipment, yeah. Yeah, playground equipment, not park. And then the no pets allowed in the playground areas.
And then also, do not damage or destroy park or playground equipment?
I wanna, I wanna leave that one in there as park and playground equipment, because I want that to include, like, the trees and stuff. I don't wanna see people in there getting up on the trees and break the limbs off and do something like that.
Right.
Well, park property works in that.
I'd second that motion.
Yeah, so I have do not damage or destroy park or playground property. Do you want equipment in there?
I just put park property, because playground's part of the park.
Okay. And then, um, no bicycle, roller skates, or skateboards permitted on playground equipment, no pets allowed in playground area. And then I left the gum, and I just changed it to park and playground rules.
Yep.
What about the no glass allowed?
I don't think we should have glass in the park area.
Yeah, I think if we put that one on there, the only time somebody might have troubles is if it's in the area. So if we just leave that in the park, so I don't know if you wanna try to maybe move that one up.
And say, no glass allowed, uh, allowed in the park?
Right, but no, not actually put it in the park, just don't specify this, then the playground.
So, I mean, right now, it's just no glass allowed. And it would, if we change it to park and playground rules, it's the whole park.
Right.
Okay.
Tony, do you have any thoughts on this? Or chief, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I would just advise my staff to be, you know, conscious of the situation, not just go into heat is spot and try to pull power, hey, you need to leave. Obviously, if it gets to that point where it's heated, back out, call, call the proper authorities, you know? And it sounds like you can kinda apply what happened with the bicycle, but yeah. Hopefully, this helps, you know? I mean, we just had another sink and a urinal destroyed over the weekend that we just replaced last week. So it's a continuous thing. We had a couple of kids on dirt bikes down at Dorner, you know, luckily they didn't really do much damage, but, you know, they were all over the place as well, so every little bit helps.
I think it's a positive first step in, in the right direction, trying to get this done. And then we can look at legally what else is, is available, what other legal means are available to enforce any other rules or rule violations in the park. Again, maybe not necessarily criminally, but getting it, getting it pushed over, make sure that the parents are aware of what's going on. Ultimately, of course, I would like to see the parents held responsible for what their kids are doing. They should be paying attention to what their kids are doing, but that's just me. I don't, that can never happen, so...
Rob, do they have any trouble over there with your summer program? The hack groups that go over there and stuff, do they see problems very often?
Every once in a while, but it's been nowhere near as bad as what it's been when school is in session. So not come with, summer's been good so far.
So with that, we'll bring this back within an ordinance for our next meeting. Josh, we'll get that all put together and...
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? Any further discussion?
The only thing is, I'd kinda like a plan. If we're gonna come back, get with everybody and come up with a plan, like, do we want one sign? Do we want two signs? Do we want three? Where do we want the signs put at?
Okay.
And if you want them more than one park, because we've got equipment in other parks too, so...
Well, I feel if we're gonna do it, we gotta put it in all parks.
Yeah, I see.
That's got the equipment, at least.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, any further discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next is item seven, Department of Reports, Administrative Services. Georgie?
Yeah, my bad.
You're back.
So hometown market is open on Saturdays. Just wanna remind everyone of that over in the historic district, 8:00 AM to noon. And then city offices, well, everybody with police, will be closed for June 19th and July 4th. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next we have police. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our visiting officer is MPO Watkins tonight. He is normally assigned to the schools, but during the summer, when they're not in the schools, SRO is there on the street. So he is currently working night shift for us, staying nice and cool at night, hopefully. The other thing I wanted to talk about real quick is firework detonation. It is almost that time of year again, so we will have our firework detonation here pretty quick. First of all, I wanted to make sure everybody shoots them where they buy them. If you buy them somewhere else, shoot them there. If you buy them in Hayesville, you can shoot them in Hayesville, but that's kinda the rule of them. Our firework detonation times are the same as sale times in Hayesville. So June 27th through July 2nd, people can shoot and detonate their fireworks from 8:00 in the morning until 10:30 at night. On July 3rd and July 4th, those times are extended from 8:00 AM until midnight. So those are the times that are available to detonate those fireworks. Hopefully, everybody can be respectful and make sure that they're following those times. And if you make a mess, please clean it up, because nobody wants to see all that stuff and have it in somebody else's yard or in the street or anywhere else. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next we have public works. Gotti?
Just wanted to provide a quick update on the sidewalk inventory that Councilman Crum brought up last month. So we've developed a GIS application so that we can perform the evaluation on all the sidewalks. And it's in, in the process of doing that now. Once that's completed, we'll probably bring back a sidewalk repair project to you guys. Also, our recycling center will be open on June 22nd from 10:00 AM to noon. And also, we held our citywide cleanup on June 1st. We had 103 participants this year. In comparison to last year, we had 43.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next we have recreation. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kind of a list of events for our Fourth of July celebration on July 4th. 8:00 AM, we'll have our Independence Day parade, starting at Hayesville Middle School, and then going to the east to the Methodist Church. 9 o'clock in Riggs Park, we'll have our OK Kids Fishing Derby. 10:00 AM at the Fan Shells, we'll have our Frog Races. Water games in the park right next to that afterwards. Free hot dogs will be in the park at 11:00 AM.